Call the meeting to order for the day.
Good evening, too.
Good evening, yes. Did I say good morning?
Yes, you did.
I'm a creature, Abbot, I guess I...
(laughing) Sorry, Dan.
Good afternoon. First item on our agenda is approval of today's agenda.
I move to approve that agenda.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Citizens to be heard. Any citizens that would like to be heard on any item that has not on today's agenda. Seeing none, approve payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to pay, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion second to approve the payment of bills and vouchers. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Approval to issue request for qualifications for construction management at Risk Services for Clay County Jail Project. Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, folks. What you have before you is a memo, and I didn't go in and try and repeat everything that was in the request for qualifications, but we did include what we will be sending out or posting on our website in regards to a construction manager. What we have been talking about is the best way to handle the deliverance of service for the construction of a jail. You folks approved the contracting with the architect firm last summer, June or July, and we have been kind of discussing and referring to the style of construction that we may take place. And was it the last jail meeting that we had, the architects went over the benefits of a construction manager at risk, a construction manager agency, and then utilizing a general contractor. And the committee, as it says in here, the committee recommends that we go ahead and advertise and interview and ask for the board to consider utilizing a construction manager. This is quite a big project. It's a complex project, and getting that construction manager on sooner than later, I feel, is the best thing to do. Now, cost, we've also been told by, I'll say, a number of people, and mostly our architectural texture firm, says that if we employ a construction manager, they are the ones that go out and seek the bids and then handle the construction project just as a general contractor would do. So what your construction manager is really replacing your general contractor. And the general contractor, of course, takes a profit off of each one of those subcontractors. And what your construction manager will be doing is those subs would work directly for that construction manager. The big difference is that the construction manager is on board during the design stage, helps with the estimates, helps in organizing and the timing of when things are done. And we've been assured that a construction manager costs you no more than putting things out for a general bid. And I think that's what the committee felt, too. That's why they were recommending that. So what you have before you is the announcement, and knowing you folks, you read all of the details of what we will be asking of that construction manager firm, and the fact that we will ask them to submit their qualifications. We will review those qualifications. We will interview the firms that want to be competing for this, and then we will make a recommendation to this board to approve going ahead with a construction manager. So I'll try to certainly entertain any questions and grant, or your chair, Commissioner Whelan sits on that, as well as Commissioner Campbell, and listen to the interviews. Plus, Commissioner Whelan and myself did visit one afternoon with a construction manager firm that came in and really helped educate us in regards to these two issues. So certainly entertain any questions before we go into it.
And we did, as a committee, thoroughly go over all these options, and I think everybody was in agreement that this at-risk is the best option for us, at least for our project. So, Frank, you have a question?
No, I just wanted, as far as the title of it, at-risk services, you know, it is to me, are we at risk at something like that, you know? Probably it's just the wrong title for the thing, but probably that's just the way it is, you know?
I think it more refers to the company is at risk rather than us, so it puts more of the risk on them than it does on us, so...
That's exactly right, Mr. Chair. That's what it really means. There's two types of construction managers. Construction manager agency is one that you employ almost as an employee, and the county holds all of the risk. In other words, they take on the insurance risks and they take on the bids review and all of those kinds of things. And at-risk, the agency that you hire then goes ahead and bonds for this $30 million project. They cover the risk on that. You will cover the cost of the risk, but they are the ones that are responsible for that. They bond. They will give you a price when you have your design all set, and they go out and solicit these bids, and they will say, "We will build this for that figure." And if, other than change orders that we request or that are needed for the project, they will hold within that price that you authorize them to do. And that's where the term at-risk, they are taking a greater risk, but then sometimes if they can do it a little cheaper for that, too, there may be a savings that they can share in, and the county shares in. And that comes with the contract language that we would put together. So the at-risk is putting the more of the risk on the construction manager versus the county.
I think that's what the committee liked, is that the firm that does this for us will pretty much, not totally, but pretty much guarantee that price when we start, and that will be at her doing it. And that's their job to see that the price that is given is the one that the project costs when it's done.
Well, I'm in here. Thank you very much for that explanation. Hearing that, I will make a motion to adopt this construction manager at-risk services.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Steve, have you got a chance to look over this contract?
I have looked it over briefly, but I am not, say, independently not familiar enough with construction, general contracting, the various options to offer any opinion on it. If there's a specific question you have, I can sure take a closer look at it and get back to you.
I just wanted to see if there are any red flags in your opinion.
No, I wouldn't say any red flags.
Well, and when we start looking at who we're going to actually have do this, then we'll certainly have...
Then it's a contract.
Then we'll certainly have the county attorney's office review it and give their approval before we do anything, so...
I think this is just changing what process we want to use.
Right.
Yes. Yes, it is. That's exactly right.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Brian. Dave, come on up. Next item on our agenda is determination of qualifications for assistant county engineer. County engineer David Overbow. Good evening.
Good evening. Fifteen years ago, the county, assistant county engineer position was held by a technical staff or a technician, and at that time, the county board made a motion to require this position to be a registered engineer. That way, we'd have two engineering licenses that work for Clay County, which is comparable to probably a dozen or 15 of the larger counties in the state of Minnesota. Not every county has to have a registered assistant engineer, but I think we feel here that it's beneficial to our residents, and in the absence of the county engineer, then you still have another licensed staff on board that can sign off on payments as well as conduct highway department business. At the current time, having a real hard time finding a good pool of applicants for this position, and I've talked over with the highway committee a little bit, and I've recommended possibly a little change in the requirement. Not a change in the actual future licensure of the position, but maybe at the initial hiring stage, we would look for an engineer in training, which is a person that's got a grad degree from a credit at a school. He's got it probably anywhere from one years to two years of experience, and he's passed an eight-hour exam called the engineer in training. And I think just to open the pool up a little more to get some more applicants so that we can have a good look at qualifications and individuals. If we could, you know, like I said, lower the initial requirements of the position to a engineer in training with two to three years of experience, and then require that them, that they get their licensure within two years as well. So the way it works is after you pass that EIT exam, you have to work underneath an engineer for four years, and then you put together an application to the state of Minnesota, the licensure board, showing that you've had progressive experience in your profession. They'll allow you to write the exam, and you go take an eight-hour exam and get a 70% or better, and then you get your license. So that's kind of how that works.
Wayne? That's been through committee.
Yes.
Correct. Thank you.
Jenny?
Were you able to discuss with other engineers throughout the state about shortages? Are we...
You know, I know the closest example I have is I got a call from the assistant engineer over in Cass County, North Dakota, and they're looking for a staff engineer, but it's kind of similar qualified. It's not second in charge or anything like that, but they had one applicant as well. Had a really, so same thing even over in the city of Fargo. And, you know, I had quite a discussion at the MT meetings this week, and wages and highs and lows kind of came up, but I don't know that, I don't personally feel our wages extremely low, but that's what I'm hearing, is they say the wages are a little low, and maybe that's just a market thing where we're located with consultants attracting a lot of the individuals, but...
We did, oh, excuse me.
No, I was just going to say we'll have to see where this goes then, and hopefully we'll have some success with...
I mean, not that we're necessarily lowering, I mean, was that the meeting here? That we're really lowering the standards that much. I mean, we're just saying that if they're working for their engineering degree, you know?
Correct.
We're going to consider them, too, you know? Probably to expand more, get more applicants and stuff to look at, you know?
Yeah.
Just because right now you don't have it yet, are you working at it and stuff like that, so... So we had a lengthy discussion on that, you know, whether we should drop that one qualification, you know? And with that, I would make a motion that we do go with the qualifications that they discussed.
EIT in two years.
I'll second the motion.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Steve.
Do you have a question? It occurs to me, if this is a position where it's expected that someone will obtain the full license in two years...
Correct.
I don't know whether your department is organized. I'm wondering, if the person gets past the first, let's say, six months of being a probationary employee and then fails to obtain a license within the two years, is there a personnel problem there? Discharging that person or terminating the employment?
You know, we've had some kind of similar with regard to CDLs. We hire sometimes at a Class B level and expect them to get a Class A within six months, and we haven't had to approach that situation, and I don't know if Darren wants to weigh in on that or not.
I think that's a good question, Stephen. If you, could this person that's hired be asked to sign a contract, that they will meet that after the two-year period, and that be enforced, or...
I would have, I guess I'd have to check, and I don't know whether that person would be covered by one of the collective bargaining agreements if it's within six months.
Not union.
Okay.
Darren, do you have anything to add to that? Come on up.
No, number one, that is not covered by collective bargaining.
Okay.
Assistant engineer, so I wouldn't have any concerns about that. But I think we would do a contract, because I think we have had that happen before where somebody didn't get the required qualifications, and I can't, this was before me, but I don't know if we released them or not. But I think in this case, since we were requiring it in the job ad and the requirements, I would probably do some kind of a contract in their offer letter to say, "You must get this qualification within three years of being employed." And that would be, I would assume, a binding contract. Now, the legality of it, I would probably have to refer to the attorney's office, but that's how I would do it.
Didn't want to lower the qualifications, though? I mean, that they didn't have to have that degree, but that they...
It's pretty much the same individual. It's just a little earlier in their career, you know? They don't have their license, but they're working towards their license, I guess, so...
I mean, if they don't work for the, I mean, I thought we were saying something about they, we don't need two people on there with the same license that you have, you know, do we?
Essentially, we would.
Okay, very good. All right.
But because we're moving that forward, we may be able to tap into a pool of applicants that don't need to meet a certain dollar threshold, is what you're saying.
Yeah, the requirements that we had before was five to eight, about five to eight years of experience, and then for the assistant, but then the county engineer was the same. So we changed that to the two to three, and then that allows the progression into the county engineer position. Once they've been here, they've gotten their license after the three years of being here, then they can move into the county engineer position if that ever becomes available, if Dave ever leaves, I guess.
Wayne?
I think you could also have a situation down the line where somebody, for some extenuating circumstance, wasn't able to do it in the amount of time, that person could then be given an extension by this board to continue working on it.
I would agree. If there was some roadblocks in the way for, some unforeseen roadblocks, I guess that would be up to the board to extend.
Sounds good. Brian, did you have something?
No, other than the fact that part of our, Mr. Chair, part of our discussion was that with the high demand for engineers, especially in this area, that if we're not willing to lessen or lighten our requirements, how are these students ever, how do they ever come out of college and get their complete license? And working under a certified engineer is a perfect opportunity for us, and we can hire them at a little bit cheaper, so, and we can hire some, really, I think, good qualified people this way, too.
Correct. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, committee reports. Wayne?
Thursday, December 3, local advisory council for children's mental health, general business. We updated the call list of all members and agencies. We went over the metropolitan area transit bus survey and discussed putting it on the upcoming local advisory council survey. Then we had agency reports from Clay County Social Services, the Clay County Collaborative Early Childhood Mental Health Network, Prairie St. John's, Lakeland Mental Health Center, Mobile Crisis Unit, Kindred Family Services, Solutions Behavior Health, Freedom Resource, and also from Summit Guidance. Also on Thursday, December 3, Lakes and Prairies Board Meeting, General Business, and then we had mandated training for the following for Head Start: reporting regarding different kinds of abuse and neglect, child and adult care food program training, shared governance training, and then we authorized several grant reports. We agreed to place down $10,000 on land for a new facility that hopefully will be built in the near future. A request or proposal will be put out for the architect, for an architect, rather, for this facility, and attorney will look at all this and make sure everything is in legal order and before this goes forward. And we set the salary for the new interim director, Lori Schwartz, and Lake and Mojo behaved admirably the other night. Compliment him on that. And then on Friday, December 4, for the Lake Agassy Regional Library for the Northern Lakes Library Network, had an executive meeting in preparation for the upcoming full board meeting, which will take place this Saturday. And that's all ahead.
Thank you. Frank?
Last Tuesday, we had the Highway Tracking meeting. We pretty much discussed already about the engineer applications that we went, we discussed quite a bit there at that meeting. And we also discussed the Holly shop that we want to build with the solid waste. And we had decided to have a meeting with the town, with a few of the townships, which we did have that meeting last night. We had Cromwell, Highland Grove, Eglund, Holly Townships were there, and we discussed moving the highway department out by the landfill. And it was a good discussion, and I think, hopefully, we came to a mutual agreement, and we'll see how that works out, but it was a good discussion, open discussion there. Other than that, Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, I was down in St. Cloud for AMC meeting. My first meeting was the General Government Policy Committee, where we went over a few things. One of the things that I thought was in employee, employment, employee benefits, we went over that retirees, and they want retirees and workers to be separate when establishing premiums for coverage of health insurance, so that was one of the things we approved. And the state audit thing, which we've talked about before, we discussed. And stated county program aid was discussed, which we already passed that resolution before. The MRCC meeting, which we had Sunday night, some good presentations, interesting, and one on rural populations, you know, sometimes we think that all our high schoolers are leaving the area, but what he's saying, yes, high schoolers are leaving the area, but in their place, people, middle-aged people are moving in to take their place. So we're not really losing that much population in the rural areas, you know? They're staying pretty basic. And we discussed a lot of stuff on broadband. One-on-one session managing conflict in boardroom and beyond, since we don't have any that here, any conflict. It was a good session on conflicts in boardrooms, and evidently, luckily, we have a, our board gets along very well, I think, so... But it was an interesting session. Went on the MCIT in the Government Trust meeting, and it sounds like they're in pretty good shape, and hopefully our premiums may go down a little bit, but we'll see. But they're having a good year. I went on Drainage Ditch, also buffer zones, where I discussed buffer zones, put on by Freebon County, and they put on a very good session on what they have done there, you know? I think some policies there that we should probably look at during it. Then I went on the mental health, adult mental health services, another good session there. And that was, that was it.
Thank you. Kenny?
Thank you. Last week, I had the JPA meeting where we just touched on the retreat that's coming up in January, but we also discussed refugees and how refugees in the community are affecting our different services, specifically the schools. How do they develop programs to help cater to those individuals? I had a facilities committee for Lakes and Prairies in the afternoon where Commissioner Ingersoll spoke about the property that they are moving forward on. And then in the evening, we had the full board meeting where we did select an interim executive director to lead us through the next few months. I also attended the AMC convention, where in our Environmental Resources Policy Committee, we continue to talk about the buffer strips, which continue to be a big, important thing that will affect all of our citizens. The preliminary maps from the DNR are now available, so now the soil and water will have an opportunity to evaluate if things were left out or needed to be taken out. I then attended a meeting about children of parents in incarceration, which I found really interesting, because our social services have been in here talking about children and protective custody, and then it kind of turned into how do we have areas in our jails existing for social workers who bring children to see their parents? An interesting conversation that I think we can use as we move forward on our own project. I also attended a leadership during disaster meeting where Homeland Security offered good tips, since our county has dealt with issues like that. We are pretty good on things that are in place to help us during that. And then when we got back, I also attended the Eglund Township, Cromwell, Holly, and Highland Grove in regards to the highway shop. They do have valid concerns, and I think it's important to hear those concerns as we move forward with the design and how it may affect different districting, so that continue, that conversation will continue. And I just attended the Soil and Water Conservation District Board Meeting this afternoon. Nothing too big to report, however, they did just come back from their state commission, and the buffer initiative was another big topic, so lots of exciting things happening there. That concludes my reports.
Thank you. I also had AMC last week. Attended the Minnesota Rural Counties Caucus meeting on Sunday night, and Public Safety Committee meeting during the conference, and I went to a session on transporting oil by rail, a safety issues meeting, and that was pretty informative. MCIT had a discussion on broadband, expanding that throughout the state, which was interesting discussion. Let's see, I had a Beyond the Yellow Ribbon meeting, and we discussed our 2016 budget, and I think that was it for me. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Several of the items that I've attended have been covered already. Highway tracking, the JPA with the city and the county, and Mr. Mojo, Commissioner Mojo covered that. The township officers in Holly with two commissioners have been covered. The AMC conference, I did attend a couple other ones, and that was the highway funding and the bonding issues, and what's the forecast, and the ratings, and the different types of bondings that come about. General Government and Conflict in the boardroom, I attended those as well. We had a jail finance meeting last week, I think it was, after the board meeting, and then we also met with Shisago County in regards to the relationship that we have and the legislation that we're proposing, and so we're still talking about that somewhat, so... I had management team meeting with the department heads. We had several items to talk about and update on. Darren and Kathy, Public Health, McKay, we had some really good progress and movement in regards to detox and where we're going on that. We had some union negotiations, and Darren will update you on that later this year, but things are moving along really well in regards to that. It'll probably be one of the first years where we may have all contracts signed before the year begins, so that is very, very positive. Lori and I met with the city of Moorhead yesterday, yesterday, reference to financing with the city and things which the committee had asked us to, or encouraged us to meet with them. I attended the Public Affairs Committee meeting over at the Chamber of Commerce this morning, and Darren and I met with Matt and Bill from Sheriff's Office, referenced some language in the contracts this morning, so... That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Just have one comment. Will you be bringing that conversation with Shisago to the jail committee before you bring that to us?
Mr. Chair, I guess I'm looking at him. Probably not. We'll probably just be bringing something to the board, so we've got to have a little more discussion on it, so... We're not, we're not in a comfortable position yet.
Okay, perfect time, and six o'clock. It's time for Truth and Taxation, and to discuss the 2016 budget and proposed property tax. For any public comment and any questions that we have, I'd probably start by going over this, Brian. over this, Brian. There are, there is information on the table, if anybody here did not have an opportunity to pick it up, you can grab something at the door. Property valuations for 2016 have been mailed, tax notices for 2016 will be sent at the end of March. The proposed budget for 2016 shows a levy increase of 5.66 over 2015. New construction growth last year equaled $119,438,600 or 1.8, 1.86 percent. The net levy increase equals 3.8 percent. Market value of property increased 363,129,100 or 6 percent. 2015 total value is 6,413,371,200. Clay County receives a payment from the state called County Program Aid. For 2016, Clay County will receive $2,901,767. The handout shows a proposed Clay County 2016 tax levy of $27,635,435. This levy supports expenditures of $70,244,605. The following pages show individual department expenditures and the changes from one year to the next, real estate tax projections by market value and the Clay County levy history. This public meeting is concerning the proposed budget. Valuation concerns and questions can be addressed by the Assessor's Office staff who are here tonight. A Board of Equalization Meeting is held in June and deals with property values. So, that's Brian, do you have something you want to go over too? And then we can open it up for any questions, people.
I do, Mr. Chair. If, you, you invited people to pick up the packets by the, by the table there, I see there's a few left, so hopefully everybody that wants one has one. There's also a signing sheet, so we would appreciate if you want to address the board tonight, that you would sign in so he can take them in, in the order which they're signed up. So, everybody has signed up that wants to speak, we'd appreciate it. Then next, I would like to run over this pamphlet just real quick. If you have it in front of you, and turning to the page two shows the Clay County tax levy and the Mr., the chairman already addressed that the, the tax request from the taxpayers is $27,635,435 and it shows where the revenue is, is coming from. And then the next page, or page three, shows Clay County's budgeted expenditures of $70 million and it shows where it's going to go. You'll see the revenue fund, the solid waste fund, family service center, debt retirement, health, and these are all of the expenditures that are expended by the county, whether they come in from federal grants, state grant fees, or, or whatever the, the revenue comes. Page four shows a layout of the different departments that are funded through those budgets and the percentage increase or reduction. That's, follows into page five. And then page six pertains to the cities of Moorhead, Vonsville, Dilworth and Oakport and it shows a market value and then it shows what the tax is and the change in that. That's just for your information, basically, because we're here talking about the county levy tonight. And page seven, which I think is a really important page, that will show the 2016 proposed taxes and it shows a county column, a school column, city or township, EDA and the watershed. And we're concentrating basically on the county this year and you are right now, and you'll see over here, market values and it starts out at 139,900. And if you want to jump down to a 200 valuation, you will see that under the county, that the tax that you paid last year, actually that's the total of, of these entities, you pay for a $200,000 worth of property of $2,392 and in 2016, $2,387. And that's a point two reduction in identical values. And then you'll see what the tax is for each one of those. The county is $802, the school is $813 and then the township and the cities and things. So, what we point out there is if your value did not change, frankly, your tax did not change. And I know there will be many questions about valuations and that their taxes went up in association with the value going up. And the Assessor's Office assesses the property and establishes a value. That is, the purpose of that is for then the Auditor's Office to take the amount of dollars that are needed to run the county and spread it over that tax value. Last year there was a big concentration of increases in farmland and, and I'm sure they leveled off a little bit, maybe even gone down a little bit, that creates a shift over. We know what, what residents have done, especially in the city of Moorhead and probably some of the others, valuations have gone a great deal. The city of Moorhead sets the assessment for the city of Moorhead and we pretty much handle the rest of the county. There's a couple townships that they contract for. Then on page eight shows the Clay County budget history and you can see 2016 in the first column of the revenues up on top and the expenditures of what we're going to pay. And then going to page nine, you'll see what the levy increase on the top of, over the period of time, there's a levy increase of $1.4 million this year. And just to highlight a couple of those issues, insurance alone is a half a million dollars. The requests from the jail is another $350,000. There was about $150,000 just on auto home placements. There's, there's a lot of service costs that have gone up in our budget and they speak for most of the increase. And then the bottom portion of that shows which funds are attributed to that 5.66 cost. And Mr. Chair, that's just the pages here in summary and, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, questions? If you'd like to have a question regarding the budget, please step to the podium and identify yourself and...
Here, I'm the Bureau Office, let's...
Oh, okay.
Well, I guess I'll start it off, I'm speaking for a lot of my neighbors that I've spoke with that couldn't be here. I'm Mike Wheeler, I'm at 656 Bus Minister Drive, South Moorhead. And we seem to have a major problem here because my valuation of my property went up $72,000 in one year. That's just short a few dollars of a quarter of what the whole valuation of my house is. That's just absolutely wrong. And I don't understand how this is coming up. Even my homestead credit dropped almost in half in one year. So my property value goes up and my homestead goes down. Now that's just totally wrong. What's happening here is, is something that needs to be straightened out because this, this is just, you're going to force a lot of people, you talk about how well the city of Moorhead is doing with growth. I've already spoken with several realtors that have said, they've already had several calls from people that they've been showing houses to Moorhead, said they don't think they want to look at any more in Moorhead, because they've already been hearing what's happening. And this has to change. I, I've always been a Minnesota resident, but had I known this stuff was going to happen when I built my house eight years ago, there is no way I would have built it in Minnesota, especially not Moorhead. I, I'm, I'm thoroughly disappointed. I'm going, my property tax is going to go up, I'm going to have to pay $1,400 more, well, even more than that, because the school stuff isn't even on there yet. And that's coming up yet. So there needs to be something changed. My house is a basic rambler. It's not a Taj Mahal, it's, it's got a cement porch on the front that my wife loves to sit in and she's got MS. And if I could right now, I'd probably sell my house and move out. Because I, I don't know if I'm going to be, I'm the only one that makes any money in the house and I don't know if I'm going to be able to keep affording this. This is, this is just insane. And I've got neighbors that are the same way. Everybody, the magic number in my area is seventy, between 70 and 75,000. So you tell me, explain to me how that happens, when everybody's number is about the same and they're different types of houses. I've been, I've been there eight years and nobody's asked me about my house. Nobody's asked my neighbors about their houses. We had somebody that came, didn't even bother to come to the door, because my wife is home every day, didn't even bother to come to the door and announce that she was on our property and my wife didn't know who it was. And all of a sudden you get somebody walking around in your yard taking pictures. Well, that pretty much freaked my wife out. And I was down in Little Falls at the time when she called and I was not happy. So we got some issues here to take care of. And for somebody to have to pay for a valuation to go up $72,000 in one year, I, I don't care how hot the property values are in Fargo-Moorhead, they don't, they're not worth going up 72,000. And I'm getting hit with specials on top of it for sidewalks that aren't even, they're not even close to my house. I'm on, right off of 50th Avenue and I'm getting hit for specials on some sidewalks down on 30th Avenue. That's, that's just stupid. So I'm, I'm hoping to get something changed here because it's insane. And what we're paying for, for tat, for interest on specials, 4.8 percent? I know you're not borrowing money for 4.8 percent. You're barely, I doubt if you're even paying 1 percent when you borrow the money. So something's got to change. And I'm hoping it's going to change today because this is crazy.
Do you live in the city of Moorhead?
Yes.
Did the city of Moorhead increase your value?
Well, it's right here on the, right on the proposed tax statement, right there.
Well, and that's, I think there's a lot of people that are concerned and upset about the increase in the valuations of their property. And if you're a resident of the city of Moorhead, the city assesses your property and sets the value on it and then, so the county doesn't have any say over what the city does in terms of assessing your property. But then if your value went up, the amount of taxes that you pay the county go up because the county goes by what the city assesses.
Yeah.
And that, and that formula is set by the state of Minnesota. We don't set that formula and decide how much to charge you for taxes, that's done by the state of Minnesota. So if you're a resident of the city of Moorhead and the city reassessed your property, you know, then the county would, would base what they charge you for taxes based on what the city assessed your value. And, you know, of course, you know, their explanation is, is that, that the value, you know, the real estate has risen certainly in the city of Moorhead and because of that, they've reassessed a lot of the properties and the values have gone up. And I know Moorhead isn't the only, I've heard, you know, this is going on in other parts of Minnesota too, in, in the Minneapolis-St. Paul area, the, the values, they've had the same situation where the real estate market was depressed for a number of years and homes were selling for less than they were valued at. And so now all that has changed and, and so their values have gone up and people are experiencing the same sort of things in the metro area that they are experiencing.
I don't have an issue with the value going up. I don't, I have an issue with it going up $72,000
Yeah.
in one year. That, that's an issue. If it went up 15 or 16,000, I'd be at home watching Big Bang Theory on TV right now. I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be up here talking about stuff and I'm not that smart when it comes to taxes or anything else, but I can add and subtract and I can multiply and I can divide. And when it comes to this, this is insane. It really is. When it's almost just short of a fourth of what the value of the house is, that it went up, and that's wrong.
Have you talked to the city assessor's office about?
Not yet, because I saw this and it said, be here at six o'clock tonight, so that's why I'm here, because that's... And, you know, it's a cute way for the city or the county or whoever's in charge of it, a cute way of saying, well, we're not going to raise your taxes, so we just jam you with the property tax or the property valuation. And then they, everybody can say, oh, see, we didn't raise your taxes. Well, yeah, you did.
Lori, did you have?
Yeah, unfortunately, there's nothing that can be done tonight about your valuation. Those hearings are in April and May.
Which does no good when we have to pay our taxes before then.
Right, but you got a valuation notice with your tax statement and that's when, when these values came out. So then we, you have to go to the city of Moorhead and go to that hearing and, and make a request for a reduction at that point. So tonight, there's nothing that can be done about the valuation, you'd have to wait until next year for next year's valuation. So this would have had to been taken care of back in April and May, unfortunately.
My valuation wasn't raised that high back in May, April or May?
It was.
No, I don't think so.
Yeah.
Well, and they have to have an, you know, they would have an explanation for you in the, you know, why your valuation went up as much as it did. You know, I mean, there, there's a formula that they used to, isn't there Lori, I mean, in terms of comparing, comparable sales in your area?
I thought it was, I thought it could only go up 12 percent.
It used to be when there's a limited market value, that was a law that actually disappeared a few years ago. There was a limit on the amount that it could increase. I'm in full agreement with your situation because I've gotten a lot of calls on that, but unfortunately at this point...
Just another way to screw somebody over really, because that's, that's insane. Because, you know, $1,400 or more increase is a lot. I don't care how much money you're making, that's terrible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Brian Thomas, come on up here.
Yeah, I'm Brian Thomas, I live at 2218-130th Avenue North, Moorhead. And I'm probably in the other direction. I've got farmland and I know it's not tax value time here tonight, but I just wanted to address the board that coming up in the next year, our land values are going to drop a minimum of probably 20 to 25 percent. Are you guys ready to budget that? Because you're using a lot of your tax income from farmland taxes right now.
Well, and, go ahead, Brian. I, I can respond to that again. This is about the levy tonight and what happens with the Assessor's Office, just like what was explained in the last presentation. The, if you live in the city of Moorhead, they are setting the values. We don't control that whatsoever. I know that might be discouraging, but, but they set the values on it. And what, what the Auditor's Office does is spread the levy, the dollars that are needed to run the county over the valuation of the county. So unfortunately, yes, when, or fortunately, your land values are going to go down and the assessors will adjust the value of that land. And that may push then more of, as in the last few years, you guys were paying a big chunk of that, of that tax bill because the valuation shifted over on you. Houses were staying pretty stable for a few years, now they've taken off. And, but what did farmland land do in the last few years? It took off like this, right? The valuation's just shot up.
When, when markets were high and...
Commodities were high.
Seven dollars a bushel, soybeans were over 13.
Yep.
Now we're looking at $3 corn.
Yep.
$7.92 for soybeans.
Yeah. And, and what will happen is, your values will be reduced, but that tax will still be shifted over the valuations of the county. So will some of your tax be shifted over to the residents, the houses that have maintained their value or gone up? Yes, they will. So that's what happens with the shift in, in the tax valuation. That's why we have to look at the total market value of the county of 6,400 and some thousand and that's what the Auditor's Office spreads that, then that tax levy over. And that's why these people that are seeing increases of 25 percent in their property value are seeing big tax increases and the ones that are seeing some reduction in their valuation will see either flat or a little less money in their taxes. But a lot of them have gone up, a lot of them have stayed the same. And that's a big shift then to the people that, that have higher value property. And that's what happens with it.
So in other words, you're not going to be able to change anything, you're going to be, continue with your revenues and your expenses and just adjust it accro- and just adjust it according to whatever the value is?
Well, I think what, what he's saying.
What I'm saying is like, if land value drops, say it drops minimum twenty percent next year, are my taxes gonna be the same as they were this year or next, are they gonna be less?
Well.
But they should be less on your farmland. If your valuation goes down, then you'd be paying less on your farmland. But what Brian is saying is then, you know, the, the valuations on residential property are going up. So they'll be carrying more of the burden. So if you look at the history of how that, that goes, that ag land has been paying a lot bigger percentage than they were when was it, ten or fifteen years ago? And now that looks like it's going to be shifting back the other direction based on, on what, what the ag land is going to be selling for and versus what the residential properties in the, in the cities are selling for.
Okay, but I just wanted you to be aware of it. Because you stated that in your statement about fifteen minutes ago that land values haven't dropped and they've gone up a little bit and they might've gone down a little, just a little. And that was a false statement, as far as I'm concerned.
Mr. Chair, if I may though, but what happens when I said land values? That's the assessed values. And your property may drop in value, but it takes a while to adjust.
Okay. Well, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Good evening.
I didn't mean to say anything. I was gonna sit and listen, but since I signed up. I'm Bill Davis, I live in Duluth. Just to his point, I was, I went to Pfeiffer's yesterday and talked to them. They had some, they sold twenty-three hundred acres of land up by Georgetown. And it sold for less than four thousand bucks an acre average across the board. And he said two years ago that he would've expected to get somewhere between six thousand and seven thousand an acre. That's a drop of thirty-five to forty-two percent, depending on how you look at it. That's a huge drop. And whether or not the, it'll ever be reflected in the assessment? I don't know. Because I would've expected some land to go down a little bit this year to stay, to stay flat. Because it's had to come down a little bit. But, I mean, that's a huge drop. And I got the same question as well. That's gonna be a burden on, that's gonna really, if you're gonna tax the same amount of money, that's gonna really shift a lot of dollars to somewhere else. That's, that's huge.
But that's, when they're evaluating that, that ag land, that's what they're basing it on, is what it, what it's selling for. So it's been selling for those, those high prices for a number of years. And now it's going the other direction. And so that will catch up and, and, and the valuations will go down and.
You also got a lot of sales out there. Sales out there aren't being, aren't happening because the bids are so low, the guys aren't taking them. There was a land on by Saban, same thing. They said no sale on that because they, they couldn't get enough money. So it's, you know, it didn't, it didn't reflect it on the statements. But the land is not valued what it was a year, two years ago. And it, even though the tax statements say that, it probably shouldn't be. But, you know, like I said, they go off sales and that by mis-sales, so I understand that.
Bill, did that acreage, no sale at fifty-three hundred?
Yeah.
Did you hear that Saban land, did it no sale at fifty-three hundred? Is that what you?
They told, they told me no sale. The secretary down there said no sale. So they didn't accept that, for whatever it's worth. But I mean, it, it, it looks like it should come down, there should be a drop, a significant one, whatever. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Ryan Morton?
Evening.
Good evening. I got my address listed as Holly, but this is regarding a business I own in Barnesville. And if I heard Mr. Berg correctly, city of Moorhead does their own assessments, but the county does assessments for certain talents, including Barnesville, correct?
Including Barnesville, yes.
My, I have a mini storage business in Barnesville that you managed to raise from a hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred dollars to two hundred and twelve thousand dollars in a single year. It's about twenty-seven percent increase. I don't know where this is coming from. That's a radical increase for a single year. If anybody's got a checkbook and money to sell for two hundred and twelve thousand dollars, because that's a ridiculous price. And I'm kinda disturbed by a couple of things I've heard tonight. Number one, something you mentioned about the valuations. I don't, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Laurie Johnson.
Laurie. Evaluations come out in March.
They come along with your tax statement. So if you get your tax statement and you also get a valuation notice?
Mm-hmm, I saw that for previous years.
Right.
Not this year.
Evaluation that comes out and the hearings are in April and May.
Yeah, I went through and dug through my files in preparation for this meeting. And I did see them for previous years. It was curiously missing from this year's, my two thousand fifteen's estimated, or sixteen's value. It would've been nice to know for this meeting that took place in May. But there was no valuation statement in there. I only get them once a year, so I didn't really pay any attention to the fact that it was missing because I don't really know what it's supposed to look like. Because it only comes once a year. I mean, you guys deal with it all the time. I would've loved to have attended that meeting and asked why my valuations went up twenty-seven percent. And it's also curious, Mr. Chairman, something you said about the valuations fluctuating, the farmland values go down, city values go up. It's, it's really curious that this, the residential values seem to go up conveniently about the same amount of money you need to make your budget numbers. I don't know where these valuations are coming from. Nobody called me about revenue numbers, what my business makes. How does a person assess a business's value without even knowing what my cash flow is? I don't think any Realtor worth a salt would ever, if I was gonna list my property for sale, these are numbers.
Well, the assessor is looking at the value of your real estate, not, not your business as a whole. So when they're, when they're setting the property tax, or the evaluation for property taxes, they're not.
I'm in the, I'm in the, I'm in the Barnesville Industrial Park. The land on the street, they're giving away. It's, it's silly. The, the numbers simply do not support. I, you know, and something, somebody else said, I don't mind when they go up. I mean, that's great for the economy, wonderful. When I raise my prices for my customers, I keep it under seven percent a year. There's, you go higher than seven, eight percent a year, you're gonna start making people angry and they're gonna bail on me. They're gonna find a different storage place to rent from. Twenty-seven percent in a single year is unacceptable. And I'm really upset that I can't get their, address it till next May.
Go ahead, Brian.
I, I would suggest that he contact the assessor's office because sometimes there's a, the classification change, sometimes it was partially taxed the year before. There may be a valid reason for it and, and that would be the best thing to do. And that's why they're here tonight, is to either answer your question or set up an appointment so they can sit down and go and answer those questions directly.
Right, right. It sounds like from what Laurie said, that can't be addressed for this tax year.
No, well, no. At this meeting, this is about the tax levy. And mid-year, they won't make the adjustment, unless they've made a mistake. Because they send out, there's thirty thousand notices go out. Like you said, you may have not gotten one. We couldn't challenge that right now because maybe there has been a mistake. And that's, that's why you need to sit down with them directly.
I, I feel a little powerless, to be honest, Mr. Berg.
Yeah, I understand that.
Because, because six years ago, the city of Barnesville did a, a big, they put in a new, new development just, just south of me. And of course, they assessed the properties around there for, you know, who saw a benefit. I was assessed for sanitary sewer and water. I don't have a bathroom on my property. How do I benefit from a sanitary sewer and water when I don't have a bathroom? They assessed me for storm sewer, great. I get rain like everybody else, it's not a bubble over me. And that's the city of Barnesville's issue, it's not county's issue. I, I understand that. But I, but I was powerless in that situation too. I, I paid the assessment. And I just feel like this is the same stuff, different day.
I would encourage you though to contact our assessor's office that, just to clarify if there has been an error or if there's been a classification change, it'll help you in the future.
And then when we have that Board of Equalization meeting in June, you can challenge, you know, whether your valuation is accurate or whether the property was properly assessed, you know, and the value set properly. So that's where that is reviewed. And you have a chance to, you know, say why that you think it's not correct.
And I bring this up with the county assessor's office? That's where I would address this?
Well, you, you, they're saying start, start there now and see if there were any, you know, any issues that, why this happened and they'll explain that to you. But if they say it's, it's, as far as they're concerned, it's accurate, then you have the Board of Equalization where you can come to and, and challenge what that valuation is and how it was done, so.
Okay, I'll bring it up with the county assessor's office tomorrow then.
They can't answer the questions now, you just set up a, set up a meeting?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Steve, Old Patrol.
I guess my, my question was answered, same question.
Was it? Okay.
It's the assessor's deal.
Okay, thank you. Is it Johnson, Lally, or, oh, Leroy, sorry.
I got the same thing, I'm at the wrong meeting, I guess. I guess I have to go in April and May. My value went up about eighty thousand dollars. And my home state credit went down in half. And I'm in the flood zone, you put a dike around me. How come my property go up for eighty thousand dollars? You got a dike around my property? It don't make sense to me. But I have to come back.
You're in the city of Moorhead, correct?
I'm not.
Oh, you're not in the city of Moorhead, okay.
I'm not in the city. But the dike is around me.
Make an appointment with Amy or Greg back there.
Yeah.
They can work with you. Amy or Greg in the back corner over there?
Oh.
Just making an appointment.
They'll take your name and, and they'll work with you on it and see if it's, if there was a mistake made or if it's the way it should be, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then if, if you're not satisfied at that point, then, you know, like, then we have the Board of Equalization meeting in June where you can challenge that, you know, your valuation went up higher than you think it should've. And these are the rea-, you know, they would present the reasons why it did and you would have a chance to challenge that and tell us why, you know, it shouldn't have gone up that high, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. And John David, here?
Lee.
Lee. Lee, okay.
I've been here before. Met you a few times, yes. And I think the root of the problem is everybody is disappointed that their valuations are going up and their taxes are going up. And I think we have a spending problem at the county level. That's our problem, is we cannot take a budget in two thousand and twelve, a fifty-eight million dollar budget, and go to two thousand and sixteen and have a seventy million dollar budget. An eleven percent increase in four short years. It's not sustainable. In a couple of those meetings we had last year with, with the board and.
The legislators?
Yes. You made the statement, Brian, and I believe this year too. You were growing, the budget was growing at two percent a year over what the increase in taxes were. And I think this year it was, what did I, if I wrote this down right, you had a one, one point eight six percent growth in tax levy.
Okay.
And a three point eight cent, three point eight percent growth.
Net growth.
Net growth.
Yes.
So there's two percent again.
Yep, yep.
We can't grow at two percent a year. I mean, and so in a decade, we're, we can expect to pay twenty percent more? You have to compound that, so we're gonna be what? Twenty-five percent more than we're paying today? So if I live to be eighty years old, I got four, I'm gonna be paying fifty percent, sixty percent more than what we're paying now? We, it's, we cannot do that. We have to, I don't think the county budget should be growing more than what we're taking in. Maybe you don't like it, but I mean, I, it.
We would love it.
We can't grow it.
We have, we have the same issues that everybody else does. We, we have huge, that we have no control over. We have huge health insurance increases. We have, right now, we're, we're sending out, we're averaging around fifty to sixty prisoners a day that we're sending out of county. Because the state of Minnesota tells us that we are going to build a new jail. These are where most of the increases are coming from.
I understand that. My health insurance gets to go up forty-seven percent. But you know what I'm gonna have to do? I have to find a, I have to cut someplace, don't I? I mean, I can't, I can't go to my, I don't have anybody I can tax and say, I gotta tax anymore. So I'm, I'm, we're being taxed to death. We own the farmland that you guys say our value is up here because that's, you know, we're, we're a year or two behind when our value was down here now. So our taxes shouldn't start going, going the other way. Instead of a constant increase that we've had for the last decade of double-digit percentages, we should maybe start dropping. Now I noticed that they didn't drop, you know, my Norman County stuff is still much more reasonable to own in Norman County than it is Clay County. But you cannot spend what you're spending or you're gonna tax us to death. And the jail, you're gonna pay for a jail on property tax or we're gonna pay for it on a sales tax? I presume is how it's gonna go. If the sales tax doesn't go, you're gonna foot it onto the, the bill of the taxpayer and we're gonna get to pay for it on our property taxes. Somewhere along the line, we can't just continue to spend money like we spend money. City of Moorhead, eighteen million dollars on some bike trails in the paper the other day. Isn't that what that was gonna be? I mean, there, it's not sustainable. So I hope you can figure out a way to.
Yeah. Well, we work constantly trying to find a way not to increase these taxes. And, and Brian, what, aren't we, out of the eighty-seven counties in Minnesota, on a pro capita basis, we're one of the lowest tax counties in the entire state? I think we're like seventy-eight, seventy-eight or nine. There's, there's, there's only six or seven counties in the entire state that, that are taxed at a lower rate than, than citizens of Clay County are, so.
Well, if one of them wasn't right to the north of us and we didn't own farmland up there and property or paying those property taxes that are half as much as we are in Clay County, maybe I'd feel better. But it doesn't make me feel any better that we're one of the seven or eight lowest when I get to pay forty dollars an acre or fifty dollars an acre. It still doesn't, it, the whole, the whole, the whole property tax issue is a, is a, is an inadequate system for taxation. It is a very, a very, very unfair taxation on property tax.
And you won't get any argument for most of us on that. And we've been arguing that with the state legislature now for a number of years, that it's, the whole system needs to be revamped. We don't disagree with that.
But I think that's the trouble, is we can't, we can't grow a budget at two percent a year and be sustainable without, without something happening. Without a revolt on your hands.
Well, Mr. Chair, I, I don't disagree with the gentleman, but, but you are, you folks are well aware of this. And unfortunately, the county ends up to be a dumping ground of the community's problems. And when you live, and when you have a bigger community like Moorhead and that's where it gets dumped on the rural property because we get a lot of demand for services here, the jail is just, is just really costing us a lot of money. Not just the jail, but also just for social services. One item of their budget, she came in and asked for another hundred and fifty thousand dollars in home placement for children. And do we leave the children in the home where they're being abused? Do we take them out? Do we pay foster parents? What do we do with those children? And I know I hate to lay that on you because that's, that's our job to figure out. But those are the kinds of costs that are coming into this board right now. Are the jail costs are high, are detox center costs are high, are home placement of children are high? You read the paper every day. You see what some of these people are trying to do to raise their kids. And it falls back on the public. And, and so there's some things that just are so tough. Take it out of other budgets, I agree. And we try to do that. We try to look at where we can save some money in regards to this. But social workers are being overworked, some of these. We have high turnover in our child protection because it is such a stressful job. Our, our law enforcement is being taxed. And you see what they talk about on the news about the gangs coming in right now. It's, it's coming at us from every direction. We're in a metropolitan area. Unfortunately, we're a rural county in a metropolitan area and we're, we're paying for it.
And we're paying for it out there too.
No, no, I'm seeing, I mean.
In the sense that you are.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm a farmer. And it doesn't take a mathematician to figure out thirteen dollar beans and seven dollar corn and seven dollar beans, you know. I got whacked pretty darn hard. Most of us did. We made some money, but it can go in an acreary. And our, none of our, you know, nothing is coming down. But I'm, that, that's what I'm saying, is the county, I don't want my daughter to have to pay eighty percent, you know, of her tax. I mean, it just, you can't, we can't grow at the rate we're growing and be sustainable, is my, my point.
Let's hope society can improve so we don't have this obligation of everybody else has to take care of.
So you need to cut someplace, so. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to be heard this evening? Please.
My name's Jack. I live just south on Seventeen Hundred Street, Forty-Five Eighty-Two. I'm rural. I got a couple of neighbors. Bought the place a year ago October. One eighty. Thereabouts, one seventy-eight five. Now you're saying my house is worth two hundred and seven thousand dollars. Well, in actual reality, I paid probably ten thousand dollars more than the house was worth, mostly because of the market. If I wanted the house, you had... there was zero time to do it. I watched places on Highway Ten, on Nine and Ten, list at noon on Sunday and by five on Sunday, there was a bidding, a five-person bidding war. And it was... the house went for more than it was. People wanna get it Fargo, they wanna get it at Morehead. And that's shifting. Where, you know, I didn't get a notice saying my tax... my house is going up thirty thousand dollars plus, you know, over what I paid for it and what the county value was, you know, the previous county value for 2014. I mean, the house gone up significantly. How can I respond to that when I don't get anything in the mail saying, "Oh, by the way, we're gonna jack your house up," you know, twenty percent?
Well, you did get your notice, correct?
No.
You got no notice?
I got the thing today or the thing the other month. I didn't get the proposed thing in anywhere near April or May.
It would've been with your tax statement. It comes... it comes a tax statement as well as a valuation notice in the same letter.
Wasn't there. And if it had... if it had said, you know, that much, trust me, I would've been there because I just bought the house. I mean, at that point, the house would've, you know, I would've been there a couple of months. There's no way that the house jumped from a market value, what it sold for, one seventy-eight five to two hundred and seven thousand dollars in the span of, what, a couple of months? When you do that calculation? And when does... when do the calculations happen? So you have to prepare your numbers.
Yeah, they... they cut it off at...
And they go out in... they go out in April. And if the house sold just before the end of the year, you know how much it sold for, that's the market value of the house, what it sold for, possibly actually less because of the market around here.
Yeah, there's certain formulas. You'd have to talk to Greg exactly what the formulas are for them.
And one of the other gentlemen said, you know, things are going down. Well, the oil patch is crashing. There was just announcement on the news yesterday that jobs in North Dakota is expecting to go from seven hundred unemployment, you know, new unemployment people per month to twenty-four, twenty-five hundred, starting next month. At twenty dollars... the projected twenty-dollar a barrel oil, the patch is gone. The local boom that's been driving prices around here is gone. That means the housing market's gonna go down. My house is gonna... that I just bought within the last year is gonna be worthless. I'm not gonna be able to sell it for what I paid for it. You know, farmland's going down. What are you gonna do? You can't... as the gentleman before me said, you can't sustain two percent per year growth.
Well, but the...
And Mr. Berg said it's because of the impact of Morehead.
Your assessed value is going to go down then if what you're saying hap...
And will the actual tax...
Will happen.
Will the actual amount that I pay go down?
Yeah, if you're... yeah, your taxes would go down. Your taxes are based on what your assessed value is, so... so if that does happen, then your taxes would go down accordingly, so.
Okay. And but as he also said, are you prepared for the...
But if you have, you know, like we said, we address those at the Board of Equalization. If you wanna challenge, you know, if you're not satisfied with what the assessor's office did in terms of your property, if it's a county property, then we'll have you discuss that with them and see if their information is accurate and what they feel is accurate. And then if it's not accurate, they'll take care of it on an immediate basis. But if it is accurate as far as they're concerned, then you'll have the opportunity to address the Board of Adjustment and explain why, you know, you don't think that their assessed value is accurate on your property.
And as Mr. Berg said, you know, unfortunately, you know, we're a rural county with a big, you know, relative to a large metropolitan area. And that affects the county. And as the gentleman before me said, you know, when, you know, he can't tax someone, he's got his fixed budget, does he's out of that? Well, if Morehead's living beyond its bounds or has, you know, has issues of its own, that's Morehead's problem. That's not my problem. You know, I chose... you know, I don't live in Morehead. You know, when I lived north, you know, technically in Oakport, in the forgotten portion, just north of Walmart there, Seventh, we were forgotten, couldn't get anything done. You know, Oakport didn't care, they're becoming part of Morehead and we're not that core part of Oakport. And Clay County didn't care because we were Morehead or we were Oakport. So, you know, I... that's it. You know, when I looked, I want nothing to do with Morehead. So, you know, I don't want Morehead's problems. That's, quite frankly, not my problem. You know, if Glendon has an issue, well, that's different. Glendon's just up the road from me. Morehead, it's not. If Morehead is importing its own problems, that's Morehead's problem. Let them pay for it. I shouldn't have, you know, a twenty percent increase in my housing market because of somebody else's problem. I break my leg with that insurance, I don't come to you and say, "Hey, come on, pony up some money here." That's my problem. You know, I get my head underwater because I spent too much of my credit cards, that's not your problem. Morehead has its issues, that's Morehead's problem. And if Morehead's the root of the problem, then the county, you know, maybe the county just has to say, "There's only so much we can do."
Well, we're an arm of the state, the county is, and so most things are determined and we do what the state, you know, as an arm of the state, we do what the state... the formulas for your taxes, all these things are determined. The state, a new jail. The state gives us no, you know, it's not...
Okay.
Do you wanna build a new jail or don't you? It's a... you will build a new jail.
Not to interrupt, but what I've heard so far today is it's not anything the county can do. It's because of Morehead, it's because of the state, it's because of somebody else. It's not, you know, we're at the mercy of everyone because we're the county. So you're saying effectively that you have no power whatsoever?
Well...
And if you can't do anything, why are we paying for county services then?
Well, what I'm telling you is, is that your property was assessed by the county... that value was set by the county assessor if you reside in the county, you know? And so they're using a formula to assess your property. And so if you disagree with it, the fact... if you say that you don't think it's worth that and the county says, "We think it is," then you have an opportunity to show that a mistake was made and your property would be devalued and you would pay less tax. You know, there are occasions where that does happen. So that's what I'm saying, that a lot of the decisions are made by the state of Minnesota in terms of county government. And they mandate what county government does different, you know? And a lot of things are different than what is expected of the city government, so.
I'd like to say you've made your point and I think you did it very well. Two people back here are the ones you should see to set up an appointment and go over. They have made a mistake with your valuation. And I think that's what you should do at this time. And they're right here. They've already set up a couple... Leroy, they set up one with you, I think, didn't they?
Thank you, Jack.
They set up one with you, didn't they? Yeah, yeah.
Anyone else who would like to be heard? Come on up.
Hello, I'm Mark Harless. I live in northern Clay County, north of Felton, and I don't have an extra grind tonight, but I'm here to learn. And a couple of things I've noticed that don't make sense to me. And it's a minor thing right now, I think, but the graphs on page three don't reflect the totals on each category on the following pages. I was wondering why that was.
Page three, Mark, is that...
Yeah, this graph.
Yep.
On page three. For example, the revenue portion shows twenty-two million, five oh nine. And on the next page, it totals twenty-two, two twenty-five. And I noticed that none of them really total the same on the graphs as do in the columns. Just wondering what was going on there.
I'm gonna look across the room to where we can't...
I had the matching when I did it.
I haven't totaled it up. I don't think it's two percent, but... that was a joke, sorry.
Yeah.
It's okay, it was a bad joke.
Mark, stick to farming.
Well, good day, John. How does the budget process work? Does somebody from each one of these line items present a budget to you?
Yes.
Or do they present it to Brian? Or is there a department head that has several of these?
Brian, you wanna go through the process that we go through for determining how we...
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, that's... you're somewhat right. Each department will present or will develop their budget and then normally Laurie and I will sit down with each and every one of those departments to go through every line item that they have submitted to see if there's just cause for an increase, decrease, what are they gonna buy with those. Then the vast majority, especially of the departments that are asking for additional new monies or new positions or new things, they will come and present to the board. Many of the items are even outside agencies that are asking for funds. And sometimes we have those come in depending upon the dollar that they're asking for, the justification. So that's how it progresses to get to a final budget. Again, this year, just as one small example, the insurance department came in and asked for that additional person for that street crimes unit. And they had to come to before the board to ask specifically for that. If they weren't gonna have many changes in their budget, maybe IT or GIS or the Recorders Office or things like that, some of the smaller budgets that we've seen maybe a decrease or are fairly flat and they need that to maintain their services, sometimes they do not come before the board, but most departments come before the board to justify their budgets.
Okay. So as I looked through the list, I mean, a lot of them seem reasonable, you know, four, five percent increases. A couple glaring examples, you know, economic development has a four hundred and sixty percent increase. How is that justified?
Yes, I can answer that. What is in that line item is the contribution that Clay County makes to the greater Fargo-Morehead area. And then about three years ago, the cities within the county, most of them, and the county itself went with a abatement program. You've heard about if you build a new house, you get back your first two years of taxes. That's where the item... we had to put the dollar somewhere and that's why it's in economic development because we have to pay that back to the taxpayer. So that's eight hundred... three hundred and eighty-nine...
Three hundred and ninety thousand.
Three hundred and ninety thousand dollars was in that item alone for just this year increase. So that's a very valid question and you're very astute to pick up on that.
Okay. Similarly, solid waste committee on the next page, on page five, nine hundred and four percent increase?
And what has taken place there as well is that we received a six hundred thousand dollar grant from the state and they are working on establishing a new transfer station and also a MRF, which is a municipal recovery system of recyclables and things along those lines. So now they are going to be spending that money for the research, the buying of property, the design of property. So that's a... as you can see, it's a huge increase in percentage, but it's the dollars that we've received from the state. Because now these are also the expenditures and it doesn't show an increase in revenue. And many times when we have an increase in expenditures, we'll have an increase of revenue from a grant or things because you notice we spend about seventy million dollars, but the levy only accounts for twenty-seven million of that. A lot of those revenues come in from other sources.
Family service center unallocated for nine hundred and sixty-five percent increase?
Family service center.
Page five again?
Yeah. I... that is probably another item and I think we will pay for that elevator. We had to replace an elevator in there of three hundred and some thousand dollars this year. And I know we replaced windows and I just can't speak to exact...
Depreciation as well.
Depreciation, that's exactly right. That's a depreciation amount. Mr... thank you, Laurie.
In businesses, when times are tough, the boss can say, "We're gonna hold the line on spending." Does anybody... does anybody have that authority to do that at the county level to say, "All right, each one of these line items, we're gonna hold the line to zero this year"? Is that a possibility? Hasn't something that's ever been done?
Well, we as a board do that and that's exactly what we try and do, so, you know, there are things, like I mentioned earlier, that we have to deal with, like the increase in health insurance. We can't... you know, we don't have any control over that like just about every individual does when you get... you know, they tell us what that increase is going to be and that's an expense we have to deal with, so.
Mark, there are some items on the previous page that we specifically had talked about and that dollar amount was changed just for one just point, is that home monitoring that we spent ninety thousand dollars in one and then it's not even in the budget for next. So we are acutely aware to what the difference between some of our needs and wants are. Unfortunately, there are mandates that we can't cut completely, but we're trying to keep it within reason.
Appreciate... appreciate all you can do in that regard, so, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Anyone else who would like to be heard? Please.
Can I see something?
Chair.
I mentioned this to Jenny last month, last month at the planning commission meeting. We... I went to the Board of Equalization in the spring and I dealt with the county assessor. What's her name? I don't know her name.
Nancy Gunner.
Very nice lady. Very nice, very courteous. The staff was nice. They took my information and actually the... there was some reductions made. So I can't say... this process does work. To some point, you'd always like to see more. But I'd like to go on record, they were very courteous and very, very nice.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Easy to work with.
Thank you.
They should be commended because they did a nice job.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Hi, I'm David Cleveland. I have property in Kurtstownship. And I was wondering in regards to, I think it's to Laurie, she was answering most of the questions on some of the farmland. Do they have a cap on how it drops? You know, like you mentioned to one person, it's twelve percent up, it used to be?
Well, it used to be a limited market value. It's strictly based on sales.
Okay.
So whatever the sales are in your area, as those go lower, so then would follow. But there's a lag.
Okay.
And so, you know, for payable 2016, was pretty much stable, maybe a slight drop.
Yeah.
And from what we're seeing out there, you know, maybe it'll be a bigger drop next year. I don't know. Amy would maybe have a better idea on that one.
I guess why I was wondering is even a year ago, and I think several of the farmers here that have stopped or come up here, a year ago, the tax value even for fifteen was substantially amount more than I'd sell my land for. And let alone, we've dropped it very little for sixteen. And that's why I think they're wondering about it. And I am too, because fifteen, it actually started probably late fourteen. But, I mean, the land value has dropped over a year ago. I mean, it hasn't dropped as much now, it's even more. But it, I mean, way more than what, we're at the limit. I'd sell this land for a lot less than what we've got it at. And anyone wants to write a check, I'd gladly. But I mean, that's even fifteen, or sixteen, I should value it so much more. But I guess that I was wondering. And then, it's probably the wording, 'cause I probably been too late also. I should've been here in April, or when you mentioned. It says proposed property tax meeting on this thing. So I, you know, it's the way it's worded. Maybe you would wanna change the wording of it, 'cause it isn't really proposed. If that's what it's gonna be, to me.
Well, we do have the option to reduce our levy. We can increase it.
Okay.
But we can reduce our levy.
Okay, and it's April that you would meet to make sure that it's going down?
Right.
And it wouldn't be capped? Why is it so extreme? I mean, as they brought out, I farm in North Dakota, so I'm completely different even than the Nelson County farmer. Our taxes are, in fact, I use this as kind of a joke when the local, I go into my local co-op, and they say, how much you pay for tax in Clay County? And they, it's an unbelievable figure if you justify it. I realize it's a different taxing situation, but it's so extreme that, well, they literally don't believe me that I pay this much tax. They literally, I'd almost bring them the sheet. They, oh, really? You're kidding? No, you must have, or, you know, in some cases, it's that, you know, you'd say, oh, the ditch work, or something. No, no, that's just county. And it's so, I mean, it's literally so extreme. And I, and then you value it so high for several years, even after it's dropped a year ago, and then it hasn't adjusted. And then now I'm gonna go to sixteen. And then I'm curious, come April, what they're gonna adjust it to, I guess, but.
Greg, do you have any idea what the ag land is doing for payable two thousand and seventeen?
Um, sales are, there's not a lot out there.
No.
You know, ones that have, you know, as the clients sell, they're stabilized.
Well, a big chunk would be, though, that Georgetown stuff that sold a couple weeks ago, or a week or two ago. That's a big hunk. That would be not just a small piece that may be right next to town, or... That would be something to go by. I think someone else brought up something up over down by Save. And remember, and you asked him about it, it was no sale. I don't know if that's the irrigated stuff? Well, then don't compare it to that, of course. But it just, I don't know, it just seems so extreme. I mean, it, I can see why these guys are wondering it, and I'm wondering it. So let alone if I farmed in the county, I'd be hoofed up. I mean, you'd wonder what county to be in, you know. And if you said you're the, one of the lowest taxed in the state?
Per capita.
Per capita.
Per capita.
Okay. It, yeah. Well, most of mine is for April, but I did wanna know if it dropped more than twelve percent, 'cause it needs to.
And Mr. Chair, just, and the assessor's office will explain this. But what also happens, set by the state, is there's tiered system. You're at a point five percent taxing, up to, I think it's a one point nine million dollars now. And so then, if you've got a second parcel of land, or whatever, then it's taxed double of what your first parcel is. So you're, sometimes people came in and they said, Jeepers, my taxes went up so much.
Sure.
And it was because, yeah, in the first two hundred acres or three hundred acres, you got it taxed at half the rate of what your next two hundred acres.
Sure.
And that really, really hurts sometimes, when the valuations are going like this.
Is that for non-Homestead and Homestead, though?
Just Homestead.
See, I don't Homestead anything, of course.
So you get that full.
Full right away.
Which, so you have a high rate right out of the chute.
Yeah, yeah. But there isn't too many Morehead or Clay County farmers that, well, maybe there is. I don't know, a hundred and sixty acres, I can't make it on it. I don't know, unless, so they're probably being taxed quite high.
Right, and that's, again, that's something that I know our legislators and our farmers, and I know our chair worked on that committee last year, to try to get a further exemption. Get that up higher, get some changes for the ag land. Because, you know, not to make it an ag issue, but ag land doesn't raise a lot of kids anymore, for schools and everything else, for services. And it's, that's why somebody mentioned earlier, the structure needs an overhaul.
Sure.
And we don't disagree with that at all.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, David.
Anyone else who would like to be heard this evening?
One quick comment. Last, when I was, when we were here last time, I would like the ag land to be a smaller... Take comparisons from closer areas, instead of such a broad area. You know, we're using the whole, all of the valley land is what Nancy's using. Has that changed at all this year? Are we still using from the north end to the south end, to the beach ridge?
We'll have to read the book out of here. I believe it's probably the same.
But I think, or, that's something you guys should look, you know... That's something I believe you guys have the discretion to say, we're gonna shrink our pool a little bit and use neighboring townships. If we're on the northern end of the township, our land is valued a little less. We're actually subsidizing the guy that's paying more. We're throwing it all together in one pool and calling it an average. We're kinda taking her in the shorts up there. So, I think, or, that's something the board should look at.
Point noted, thank you, John.
Anyone else who would like to be heard this evening? Anyone else? Thank you. Anything else, Brian, for this evening? Laurie, anything else? Steve, anything? Anything from the board? Go ahead, John.